Okay, welcome to our December 17th regular meeting of the Town of Niqwa. This will be our last meeting for 2025. 2024, starting 2025, yeah, that's a good way to start it. All right, so we'll start off with the approval of the agenda. Be it resolved that we approve the regular meeting, regular meeting agenda for December 17th, 2024. Moved by Councillor Costin, seconded by Deputy Mayor Parrott. All in favor, opposed, carried. Okay, everyone was sent out the minutes, number of the minutes. Be it resolved, we hereby approve the minutes of the regular meeting held December 3rd, 2024 as circulated. Moved by Councillor Pottinger, seconded by Councillor Sisley. Any questions? All in favor, opposed, carried. Uh, council reports, have we got any council reports tonight? Councillor Sisley.
Uh, the Town of Niqwa Saturday at the Yellowhead was a huge success. They estimate over 450 people were in attendance. Uh, there was many kids skating for the first time and the ice bikes were brought out and they were well utilized. Cass just wanted to send out a thank you to all the volunteers and organizations that worked to make that event a success. Um, and I just wanted to quickly touch base on our rec director. Cassandra Groan has come up with the winter program guide. This guide will actually be on the niqwarecreation.ca website. You can download it off of there. Um, it's great. It just, it highlights what is available for residents in town and around our, surrounding our town, um, what they can do all winter and it puts some organizations and businesses information up there as well. So something very good that she's come up with.
Anyone else? Councillor Costin.
Last Friday, I met with the HAND committee. Um, just a little bit of a report, there was five new lifeline installs. Mail program is back at to more normal range. Georgia Vick here continuing to do a great job. Michelle noticed a lot more in-office visits with seniors looking for affordable housing. She's working closely with Manitoba Housing to advocate for the needs of these clients. Uh, the first of five senior social afternoons is starting December 20th, 2024. And a thank you goes out to Stride Credit Union for a $500 donation towards it and for the Handy Van for providing free transportation to these events.
Okay, thanks, Franco. And Councillor Pottinger.
Um, I attended a beautiful Plains Community Clinic, um, meeting. We're working toward doing some exterior landscaping at the clinic. Um, a lot of the interior things have been completed or are being completed. And we're looking at some exterior landscaping and we also replaced some carpet in exam rooms with solid surface just recently, so people might have noticed, um, vehicles there on the weekends and that sort of thing. That was, that was done outside of business hours, so I take it it went very well. Uh, I attended a Yellowhead special budget meeting. Um, we worked on that for, for a good evening and then a regular, uh, Yellowhead board meeting, uh, where we're still working through, uh, the Titans contract. Um, but other than that, um, regular operations over there.
Okay, thanks, Lisa. Anyone else? If not, we'll ask, uh, manager of operations, Denise.
Thank you, Mayor Denise. So first thing we'll talk about is garbage before I forget. So, uh, we have garbage scheduled for December 26th, but that will now be rescheduled, and this is recycling garbage, uh, for December 27th. So we're going to move it one day back because Evergreen will be closed on December 26th. So Zone One Recycling Pickup will be on Friday, December 27th. Zone Two Garbage Pickup will be on Friday, December 27th. Now that's not much, I didn't forget. Uh, we can discuss some snow clearing. So obviously we had a big snowfall, staff went out, contractors went out. We had a big clearing done and we've had a few more snowfalls since then. So staff again are out kind of tidying things up, ensuring that things are clean. Our main emphasis and focus obviously is to work into the business districts, um, ensuring that all of those gutter lines are free and free of snow for patrons to come park and business access. Our secondary act is to also be into the school zone to ensure that there's nice adequate wide areas for traffic flow and safe access for the children to walk around. Uh, back lane clearing has been started, I believe it should be nearly complete. Uh, park paths have been cleared off and now it's just kind of general tidying around stuff. So everything's moving along, moving along nice there. Uh, contractors working out on Hampton Street in front of the hospital, uh, for the storm sewer project and that one's still moving along nice. Luckily, we've moved past the heavy frost zone where we were digging through about three feet of frost. Now we're just into open fields. Now we're down into like six inches or a foot of frost, so not bad at all. So that project's moving along nice and should pick up pace again now that we're out of the busy zone with heavier frost. Uh, we've got some projects that went underway with, um, I did some quote requests, which will be closing later this week for some additional work on Hampton Street near the hill. So there'll be some earthworks that will plod into the new year. So again, we'll do some more earthwork and rip some frost. Other than that, uh, we had a public works meeting to kind of plan out some of the projects that council is highlighting for their 25 budget year. So we discussed those, outlined it with the committee and I've been preparing quotes of those. They've been plugged into the budget line already. So we can kind of get some idea of what projects are feasible and that we can afford to do in 25.
Excellent. Were you going to mention yesterday?
No.
I thought that was medical clinic. Did you want it to go ahead?
Yeah, well, just want to mention that Dr. Louis Elish, uh, was brought here by Prairie Mountain Health. Tamarak was the vice president for recruitment and retention. Uh, he chose Niqwa as his number one preference because he wants to raise his family here, which he's going, wants to start here as well, I guess. And his personality was really a super, it's going to be a super good fit for our community. One of the things that came out of the meeting that we often get a lot of people saying, "We don't do anything to try and attract doctors. We should be doing this, we should be doing that." A lot of things come up with, "We should throw money at them, we should give them free housing." Look at all the other communities are doing and the message from Prairie Mountain Health is that gets in the way of their recruitment efforts and, uh, does not gain benefits because the doctors don't stay very long, they run out their time and they're gone. What made Doctor Elish choose Niqwa was, uh, he did intermittent work as a clinician assistant and physician assistant and he enjoyed the community so much that he wants to live here. So providing the community, providing the welcome wagon is the more important thing to retain and attract doctors as well as all types of, um, people for our town.
Yeah, good, thanks, Frankie. Okay, uh, sorry, was there any other reports? Nope. Okay, Colleen, correspondence?
Uh, the first one is from the Niqwa Handy Van Board. It's a funding request on behalf of the board. We'd like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to actually attend our council meeting in August and where they talked about the commitment to the support of the Handy Van. Um, as they presented during the meeting, they have a big bus and two small vans and the older one is, uh, 2014 with 230,000 kilometers on it. And they talk about looking at replacing it at some time in the future. The funding from the provincial government to actually repurchase the van is, uh, talks out of $30,000 a year. This is for running your handy van service and it hasn't increased for decades. Isn't enough to cover the operational costs, nor does it cover sufficient funding to put anything aside for Handy Van. As a follow-up, since meeting, they would like to request a dollar eighty per capita donation to the organization for the 2024 budget and for future years to be considered. And, uh, if you have any questions, to give them a call. So just so you are aware, based on population of 5,685, that's $10,233 donation they're looking for annually in addition to what they're given.
And they haven't raised the rate in years, correct?
The province, no.
Well, that would be one thing I would suggest is to raise the rate.
Oh, the rate to use the van? I think I'm going to have to defer to somebody on.
Well, I think part of, part of the reason why the request has come forward though too is HAND does receive per capita. Um, they would like to be seen with not getting a raise from the government in over 30 years. There's, there's many factors that go into it, not just raising the rate for the Handy Van. Um, yes, it's something that definitely should be discussed and has been discussed. What comes back out of it is the fact that the users, uh, they feel there's going to be a lot of pushback from the users because the users don't financially have the money for the rates to be raised. It's, it's, I know it goes around in a circle and it's, it's, some agree to have it raised, some don't. Even with the raised rates, it still isn't going to be enough to, to have it be.
Buy a van.
To buy a van, yeah. And that's, this money they're talking about is a good chunk of it would be put away for a van. And the cost of, you can't get, um, like the two vans that they have, you can't buy the small vans anymore as a Handy Van. So you're looking like they've been, John Ray have been pricing them. John's been looking and it's $150,000 to $170,000 now for a new Handy Van because you have to go bigger than the six seater. They don't make them.
So they're asking for a dollar eighty per capita. What is the per capita that Niqwa don't give us now? Per capita?
We don't, we don't.
They give $30,000 from the province.
We, we contribute to HAND on it per capita and we have, I mean, we've provided emergency grants to the Handy Van continually. I guess if I knew, I guess from a budgeting point, if we look back at a three-year average of what we've had to supplement the actual incomes and we see how that actually looked from one respect, I mean, it is a new cost line on the budget, but it would also be one that would be budgeted and not an emergency response annually. So there's a, there's a win-win from looking at it both ways. Whether we agree that's the number, how is supposed to be the budgeting process of coming forward? It's, we do know what's in, I mean, we've been presented some bills over the last few years to meet the shortfall that's happened with the, with the Handy Van community.
And just to let everybody know, that letter has gone to all of the RRS as well. They, they, when Handy Van met, it is of the understanding that this is not just a Town of Niqwa thing. They are all going back to their councils and they all expect their councils to be putting a per capita in so that it's fair.
Okay, Colleen, uh, who's out to read this?
I'll just carry on. Multimaterial stewardship Manitoba, you have received, and I'm not going to read it to you. It's a fairly lengthy report, it's 22 pages long. If you recall back earlier in the year, this is part of getting a better understanding by the multimaterial stewardship Manitoba, an understanding of what gets recycled and what gets, um, put out residential, in the west, residential waste composition. So they did a study in Niqwa earlier on and they looked at a sampling of 10 single-family residential units and two multi-family residential units and they sampled them on, um, for a period of time and I can't remember if it was over the course of a month. What they did was they basically collected your garbage van or your recycling van, they took it back to Public Works and they, they peeled it all apart and decided what was getting thrown in the waste that should have been recycled, what was getting recycled that shouldn't have been recycled, and they analyzed all that. The primary objective was of the waste composition study where to provide an estimated annual per capita waste generation rate, provide the generation and composition of both the recycling and the garbage streams and to present the current recovery rate by material for all recyclable materials. Secondary, they were, it was to provide the municipality with a measure of the effectiveness of our recycling programs and other waste production initiatives, to determine the right recycling set out and participation rates in the sample area and compare the generation recovery contamination and set out rates within previous studies. So, um, when they did this timeframe, it happened in May and like I say, I'm not going to read this to you. It, the summary and bottom line is that we probably could use this information to analyze the things we are collecting and make sure we're doing the ones that are generating some profit for Niqwa. And, um, as much as we try to get people to do things rightly, there's still contaminated recycling roads that get rejected at Evergreen. And, um, this is a, it's been a year, well, I've been here 11 years and we're still trying to get people to, you know, stay the course and do it right. I, I don't know how much more we can do, so. You can read the report if you have any questions, I can help. I won't, we'll be here till nine o'clock if I read it.
It's a tough chew, I did read it.
Um, age-friendly Manitoba, this is the community collaboration grant and it's a $10,000 value that was given to Manitoba based on an application that went in recently for a grocery run slash senior therapeutic recreation activity slash senior dance program. So, uh, maybe Councillor Sisley can speak more on this because they actually met today. They were presented the check this morning from the age-friendly group and Brenda Tom that came and presented it this morning and maybe I'll let Councillor Sisley speak.
Uh, yeah, so Michelle from HAND, Justin from Handy Van, myself from Arts Forward and Cass from the Town of Niqwa, the Recreation Department. We had all worked on, um, Cass put the grant together, uh, the other three organizations. Uh, we worked with Cass on how, how to implement, um, and I, we're all very excited about this. So Handy Van's a huge part of this. Um, we have Handy Van, Cass has budgeted it out, we have enough for 22 free rides for all of the events, whether that be the grocery shopping or the activities that will be happening. Um, right now, co-op, um, because of co-op sponsorship, we have Seniors Tuesdays for Handy Van, which our seniors in Elks Manor, KK1, KK2, Aspen Lee and Yellowhead Manor all get, uh, free trips to co-op grocery store, which has been great. And with this one, we're also going to do an additional, we're going to do Wednesdays, uh, once a month that people can phone Handy Van, register, they get free trips. Uh, this one will be to Safeway that they can get their groceries, so just to help those seniors in their houses. We're going to look for the ones that are in their homes that haven't had the ability to, to have the other free trips. We're also looking at, um, once a month doing different activities with the seniors. Some will be, the venue will be Arts Forward, some will be trips out to Clear Lake. Uh, there's McCurry Roadio is one of them. Um, and then the senior social hour and dance, so as Match or Ranka talked about. Um, so the first seniors, uh, social afternoon, which was kind of something else, now we're going to be able to run that and then run into these social hour and dances. Um, uh, we'll be running all the way through 2025. So it's a $10,000 grant. Everything is free for the seniors on this. Um, and the big thing was to get our seniors out, get them socializing and doing as much as they can in the community. So Cass has come up with some really great ideas for the activities too. So we're all pretty, pretty impressed and pretty excited talking about the grant this morning, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have, uh, some correspondence from the Association of Manitoba Municipalities regarding the third round collective bargaining for the RCMP. So just to premise this, uh, more recently, the RCMP as we know it became unionized. They negotiated the first round, second round of collective bargaining. It resulted in a retroactive adjustment for Niqwa of roughly $117,000. Um, so now they're going into the third round collective bargaining, having now caught up in that duration of years that they are now covering. And the association has been working very strongly on behalf of the 21 municipalities in Manitoba that have a municipal partners contract under the MPSA program, the police servicing agreement, and we are one of them. Um, so what is, uh, we've been lobbying for in the past, some who have more officers lobbying more strongly because the impact on their budget is way more significant than it is here, is the idea that when the federal government negotiates these contracts, they, um, haven't been to this point necessarily taking into account any information that might be provided from the local 21 and PSAs that are out there. They negotiate and then they give you the word after about what they've negotiated. They aren't taking into consideration the timelines associated with municipal budgets and the fact that if you, you know, it might sound like not a lot for larger municipalities, but $117,000 not budgeted for is maybe a little more difficult to find. And if you're a community like Thompson or somewhere up north, when they owe millions now in retro pay, they, they would like to have a say at the table somehow, at least to get the timeframes appropriate and talk about how they're going to fund all of this. So this particular piece of correspondence from the Association of Manitoba Municipalities is strongly encouraging the 21 municipalities that have a municipal police servicing agreement to write into the National Police Federation and to the people in charge of doing the third round collective bargaining, stating our concerns, stating that we would like to at least be heard. Give us an avenue to make comments, should we have any. And, um, you know, come good on the fact that you promised the ability to do so and to this point not necessarily have stepped up to the plate to allow that to happen. So there is a, I should say, there is an attached letter as a template that we can file with the AMM and file with the country at ministers in the federal cabinet and of course in our own provincial jurisdictions and our MLA and whatnot. And if you wish me to file that letter, we can get one prepared and have the mayor assign it.
Yeah, definitely.
Uh, the next one is Manitoba Transportation and Infrastructure. And this is just a little FYI for everybody that might be interested. As we all know, when the hospital is moving along there, there's going to be an access required off the highway. It will be an access on the north side of the piece of road that directly has Manitoba Hydro enters across from it. So this is just a notification that they are prepared to, uh, proceed with that intersection and they're looking and targeting right now June of 2025 to get that work underway. We did respond back that when we received the mapping, some concerns that the mapping didn't identify the fact that there'd be some particular access closures on property they purchased on the north side of the highway further to the, to the east there. And they did say in response to us that those will be closed as probably as part of this project. And the fact that they will try and make sure that any coordination they can do with us when we create the northwest or north-south piece of road internally, uh, we're not got any conflicting issues with the construction. Uh, multimaterial stewardship again. This particular letter is the one we receive annually to tell us what we're going to receive for 2025 in recycling payments. So the amount is $83,115.27 for 2025. Just so you know, that's a $10,587 increase from 2024 and an increase of four tons of recycling. So as much as people aren't recycling as much, our increased population, I would suggest, is driving our increase, not people changing their methods of recycling. Uh, we are also given, we do not receive from, uh, the MMSM right now monies for recycled newspaper. What we get is in-kind advertising for the newspaper amounts and the tonnage that gets sent as newspaper. So for 2025, we're given an in-kind advertising amount of $3,412 that we can use towards, um, putting recycling-related ads into local publications.
Okay, uh, any questions at all, Colleen? If not, we'll move on to finance. Uh, everyone will have received the November financial statement. So the resolution is be it resolved, we approve the financial statement for the month ended November 30th. Moved by, uh, Councillor Gerard, seconded by Councillor Pottinger. Any questions? All in favor, opposed, carried. Colleen, outstanding AR?
Uh, so once again, this is a regular thing, we normally do quarterly for utilities to add to tax. We are also though, because this year in, adding some, um, some delinquent accounts receivables for some fire inspection fees that have not been paid or construction and demo charged. And we also have a request to write off a amount collectively of 2021, 22 that is a person that is a non-resident in Niqwa and cannot add to taxes. And we, uh, we, we haven't been able to collect it. We looked into pursuing a more legal route to collect it and, and the dollar value is such that, I don't think we want to spend the same dollar value in legal fees to lose out basically at the value of twice the amount of money. So we're recommending the write-off of 41, or not the write-off, the addition of taxes of 41 utility accounts that are outstanding of value of $12,000 roughly. Three accounts receivable totaling $365 and one write-off of $1,446.
Okay. Any questions?
I mean, that's considerably larger than what we've seen in some quarters. Do you think we attribute some of that to, to the mail issue?
Maybe I'll speak to that. So, so the list we have looks similar, the list is very similar to last year. We brought up a similar amount last year. So what happened was, we actually had 25,000 outstanding in utility accounts, um, this year. So we've driven it down to 12. Staff, um, were very diligent about phoning people, emailing them on Thursday and Friday and even up until yesterday and today, contacting people personally. And, you know, a lot of the feedback was, "We didn't get it in the mail." No, no, the bill went out in October, mid-October, well before the mail strike and a second notice went out well below before the mail strike. What they didn't get in the mail is the third one. So we're starting to send three and four mail pieces to everybody and phoning people. Um, we're, we're going to take a strong look at that process and probably through our next PUB application, start suggesting there's got to be an administration fee because I, to be honest with you, it's the same people, if we took a trend, the same people on the list every single time.
Okay. So the resolution reads, whereas section 252 of the Municipal Act authorizes a municipality to collect debts in the same manner as a tax may be collected or enforced under the Act and whereas nearing the end of 2024, there are outstanding utilities and accounts receivable charges that remain unpaid or uncollectible, therefore be it resolved that all those accounts that remain outstanding at December 31st, 2024 from the attached list be hereby added to the property tax rule and further be it resolved that for the single outstanding AR account that cannot be added to the property rule due to the debtor not owning property in the Town of Niqwa, we hereby approve its cancellation and write-off as uncollectible. Moved by, Councillor Costin, Chuck, seconded by Councillor Sisley. All in favor, opposed, carried. Interim operatives in Manitoba.
Uh, so every year in the month of December, we are required under the legislation to establish an interim operating budget. And the purpose of that is just to give us the abilities when January 1st hits that we can write checks and make sure bills are paid. Uh, we don't normally go into, uh, the formal processing of budgeted items that are bigger in nature. We leave those for when we more capture all of those purchases into our regular budget, which will be passed in May. So this just gives us spending authority and, um, we're asking you to approve it.
Okay, be it resolved that in accordance with section 163 of the Municipal Act, the council of the Town of Niqwa hereby adopts the following provisional estimates in support of operating and capital expenditures for the period from January 1st, 2025 until the adoption of the annual estimates. General Government Services, 464,000. Protective Services, 219,000. Transportation Services, 454,000. Environmental Health Services, 190,000. Environmental Development Services, 22,000. Public Health and Welfare Services, 224,000. Economic Development Services, 90,000. Recreational Cultural Services, 140,000. Physical Services, 90,000. Total operating requirements, uh, I did round off some of those, 1,993,750. Total utility, uh, utility operating requirements, 750,000. General Capital Requirements, 485,000. And Utility Capital Requirements, 462,000. Moved by. Move by. Deputy Mayor Parrott seconded by, Councillor Gerard. Any questions on that? All in favor? Opposed? Clinic lottery?
So every year, we also understand that the medical clinic will probably do another lottery in support of things that go on at the clinic. We need to pass a resolution so that they can apply for a license to hold a lottery under the provincial realm.
Okay, fairly straightforward. Whereas in Ni'waua District Medical Committee, as represented by the municipal jurisdictions, Ni'waua, Glenella, Landstone, North Cypress, Langford, Rosedale, will be filing an application to obtain a charitable gaming license as part of their annual fundraising efforts in 2025 to sustain and improve health services for the community and surrounding areas. Therefore, be it resolved that based on the contribution sharing agreement, the council of the town of Ni'waua agree to financially support the committee in their efforts to secure a license and raise money for the Ni'waua District Wellness Center in 2025. Move by. Councillor Pottinger seconded by Deputy Mayor Parrott. All in favor? Opposed? Lease agreement?
Next, we have a lease agreement. This is for property we more recently purchased in the spring from Dale and Sarah Lowen. It would be parcel A Plan 56267 in the north half of 321415. So having now concluded the purchase of that agreement and part of the, the agreement when that land was purchased is that we would also lease that back to this particular individual for cropping purposes until we are required to use it for development. So we're asking for approval to execute this lease and put it in place.
Be it resolved that we approve entering into a lease agreement with Dale and Sarah Lowen for their agricultural use of parcel A Plan 56267 in the half, north half, 321415. Move by. Councillor Costen Chuck seconded by, Councillor Sisley, all in favor? Opposed? Carry.
Lastly, we have the contract for 2025 to '29 for generatorial services for the Civic Administration Building, the flats, the RCMP building, and the fire hall. So we received.
And the town office.
Oh, sorry, yeah, yeah. Received nine bids, one was non-compliant, so we reviewed and measured and evaluated eight different bids, and you all have the sheets in front of you. We're recommending that we choose the low bid of Justin Chokolski, commercial cleaning, amount of $39,600 for each of the years, 2025 to '29, plus applicable taxes.
Be it resolved that we approve the council of the town of Ni'waua accept the bid of Justin Chokolski, commercial cleaning to provide cleaning services for a five-year term ending December 31st, 2029 for the town office, the flats, the fire hall, and the RCMP detachment at an annual cost of $39,600 excluding taxes. Move by. Deputy Mayor Parrott seconded by, Councillor Costen Chuck. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Okay, any additional business? Okay, seeing none. I guess that we will, first of all, on behalf of the council and the staff of, of the town, we'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and we will see you in the new year. Be it resolved that the council of the town of Ni'waua do now adjourn this meeting at 7:35 PM. Move by. Deputy Mayor Parrott seconded by, Councillor Costen Chuck. All in favor? Opposed? Carry.